Good evening. To the ARPA Committee meeting for November 2nd, 2022, would everybody please stand for the flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation, ungod, indivisible, with every equal justice for all.
Stacy will take roll call.
Councilman Gary Donovan.
Councilman Gary Donovan, Councilwoman Lawrence present.
Councilwoman Colleen O'Connor, I understand is on her way. Councilman Ron O'Quagliani.
Ron O'Quagliani, Councilwoman Lawrence present.
Councilwoman Bridget Hosky is here. Councilwoman Mellie Garthwaite.
Councilwoman Mellie Garthwaite, second in the house.
Councilwoman Sarah Akbarali is absent. Councilman Mitchell Galagano is absent. Councilwoman Robin Watt Hamilton.
Councilwoman Robin Watt Hamilton.
Councilwoman Catherine Tucker is absent. Councilman Victor Boris is absent. Councilman Robert Bruno.
Councilman Robert Bruno, 9th District present.
Councilman Stephen Johnstone.
Councilman Stephen Johnstone, 10th District present.
And Chairman Peter Massaro.
And Chairman Peter Massaro, 6th District present.
Okay, we do have a quorum, Mr. Chairman.
Okay.
And I will.
Read the call of the meeting.
Certainly will. West Haven City Council, ARPA Committee meeting, November 2nd, 2022. Notice Agenda: In accordance with Rule Number 12 of the Rules Governing the Actions of the City Council, Chairman Massaro has called an ARPA Committee meeting to be held at 6:00 PM on Wednesday, November 2nd, 2022. The meeting will be held at the City of West Haven, 355 Main Street, 3rd Floor, Council Chambers.
Thank you, Stacy. At this time, I would like to make a motion to approve the revised resolution for Communication A-1 for the Food Bank Support Fund as follows. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
What's the revision, Mr. Chairman?
I'm gonna read it into the, I'm gonna read it into the.
But will we know the difference between the old one and the new one?
Um, well, I guess we will, because I have the old one, I believe, on my phone. And I could go through that if you all would like me to do that. Okay. Yeah, I had, I had, I did have Diane highlight it for me.
So the bold print could change?
So, no. Uh-uh. So, if, do you all have a copy of the original one in front of you? No? You gotta be kidding me. No, you should.
Do we?
Yep. Okay. And do you all have the new one? The new one should probably say, she would have put the honorable.
That's the old one.
So, "To the Honorable" is the new one, and the old one is attached. But I don't know, I don't see where she highlighted anything on the old one. So, I can, I could go through my highlights if you all want me to do that. So, the first page of the old one, at the very last paragraph there where it says, "Whereas this resolution is intended to supersede and replace previous resolutions made on the same subject." Now it states, "Whereas this resolution is intended to supersede and replace previous resolutions made on the same subject, including but not limited to the Food Bank Support Fund Resolution approved by the City Council at a special meeting on May 31st, 2022." And on the second page of the old one, the top second line, where it states, "Of the City of West Haven exclusively," I believe that the word "exclusively" is now taken out. I don't see that on the new one, though.
On the new one, bold, it says "exclusively."
Can you, so it doesn't, right, so that "exclusively" word is taken out, and funding will be made available as subgrants to West Haven charitable organizations. The word "West Haven" is taken out. Next line, "Provide goods and services or invest in infrastructure improvements that addresses their mission. Community agencies located in West Haven are invited to request funding." That is taken out. Next line, we have Program A, the elderly services. It says to provide funding for not-for-profit, West Haven-based, so "West Haven-based" is taken out. Then down where it says "School," Program B, school services, "Provide funding for not-for-profit, West Haven-based," so the "West Haven-based" is taken out. And down where it says "Program C," "Provide funding to a West Haven not-for-profit," so the "West Haven" word is taken out. Provide funding for, for D, "Provide funding for a West Haven-based," the word "West Haven-based" is taken out. And the next paragraph down, or the last sentence would be, "Not-for-profit organization that may need monetary assistance to develop programming and/or improve infrastructure with the purpose of procuring food, assembling food, managing distribution and/or storage." And then it's, the words are added "to the residents of West Haven," is added to that. And that is all I see for the changes.
So, I'm, and I apologize, because I know this packet was here on the table. So, is there something from whomever determined that our first resolution wasn't valid? Is there a letter or a stat?
Yes.
I think I had asked to have, to see the actual regulation that we were, we needed, why we needed to amend.
It's attached to the, to the new resolution.
There's, I think it's the top page, and that would be from Jack Regan.
So, can I ask Ken a couple of questions? Hi, Ken.
Hey, guys.
So, Ken, I guess my, my question is, since we were apparently too narrow for the ARPA regulations, there must be, there must be a program and a project must be different elements within the ARPA funding regulations, right? Because clearly, the projects that we do are exclusively West Haven. We're not gonna go renovate, you know, something in New Haven or Hampden or Milford, right? And then, I think what they're saying is, is that programmatically, we have to open up these programs to other than West Haven entities. And I'm, I'm kinda looking at the macro level, right? I'm not really specifically talking about this food resolution in particular, but, so I guess any program that we, that we wanna put forward, now, there's a few other ones in there. I think there's, one that comes to my mind is the aid for small business, right? So, so if there's, we would have to open up that aid to businesses outside of the City of West Haven if West Haven residents utilize that business?
No, I don't think so. I see what you're saying, so, let me just kinda run through this. If, if you're gonna build a fieldhouse, the fieldhouse clearly is gonna be in West Haven, service West Haven residents.
Yeah, projects, I understand.
But, you're right, but you couldn't say, "Only a West Haven company can build the fieldhouse," right? Now, with the food, what you're doing is you're actually putting out an RFP for a company to perform a service. The first resolution said they had to be West Haven-based. That's no different than saying the contractor building the fieldhouse has to be West Haven-based. When it comes to the, the business grants, you're not doing an RFP. You're giving a micro grant to a business within the boundaries of a West Haven, and I believe that's fully acceptable.
All right. So, we were too restrictive on who, who could participate in the program.
Yes, and we, we got a sense of that, and remember, you know, we're, this particular resolution was written before UHY came on, and we had gotten a sense of that when we were putting the VAC truck out. And we had used the local vendor ordinance, which, as you know, exists in the purchasing ordinance. And we said, "Hey, if you're a West Haven company building the VAC truck, you get the 10% advantage over the other companies who are not in West Haven," which is a resolution that exists now for all bids, right? That was thrown out by UHY. They said, "You'll be disqualified." And that's when we got the first sense that you could not use locality or geography for an RFP. Now, I think it goes a step further. One of the four or five recipients of these funds has a New Haven address. Your new resolution allows for that, which makes this reimbursable by ARPA, but I have a sense that if you, if your resolution was written without the West Haven requirement originally, and we had only given it to West Haven organizations, that may have created a problem as well. Just because your resolution says it, the fact is, if we had done just West Haven-based organizations, there may have been, in a future audit, a problem.
Yeah, and that's where I'm going, because I think that's exactly what, that was what the bid, that was the language in the bid, I believe, that was put out, right? So, so, I'm almost at, I'm trying to figure out, okay, do we, and that's, I like to talk about how these West Haven-based entities get their funding, because I think, yeah, what's the process for them to get funded?
Sure.
But I almost think that we need to, to separate the two, and, and provide the money to the West Haven-based businesses, and then rebid the other piece, right? Because, so if I'm from out of West Haven, and I looked to bid on this, and then I saw the bid that said, "Oh, only West Haven entities could bid on it," so now I didn't bid, I don't know, I'm concerned that that may be a problem. What do you think?
Well, I think it's worth looking at, and I can make that happen. I'm also gonna say that we went through a pretty extensive process to ask organizations who were servicing West Haven residents to bid. And the only one that we captured, if you will, that was not based in West Haven was the Fish organization. But we have a history, we have records of phone calls we made to organizations asking them to bid. I'd have to look at the original advertisement, but I'll certainly get back to them, I'll talk to the team.
Did they look? I think that's my concern, right? So, again, it's, it's just our programs in general, so, and I understand this, I mean, I get it. So, did UHY look at our whole process that, around the, this particular bid, just to make sure that we're, you know, we don't find out six months from now that.
Of course.
You know what I mean?
I'll, I'll put an email out to the attorney in UHY, and I'll have an answer for you at my next meeting. And I had emailed the entire council, I believe, the exact language within the ARPA rules indicating why you couldn't use geography as, as condition.
Most certainly, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
What do you have, Ken?
Do you guys have the updated project list? I've made copies for you. You have them, or?
Yes.
Okay.
Are we gonna hold this until we get a decision on the UHY?
Where are we just holding? Are we separating it out?
Yes. Councilwoman Hosky, you want something, Council?
We originally approved this resolution in May. We've gone five months trying to figure out how to get food to people who have food insecurity. And now, we passed a resolution that essentially, I don't know what's the word for it, breaks statute, but I find to be concerning, because I'm thinking to myself, and I believe I've mentioned it in the past, who writes our resolutions? Who reads them? And how do we know they're legal? So, we passed this resolution that if I didn't question us awarding money to Fish, and asked a lawyer for a legal opinion, and him and Lee went out and spoke and realized, ah, the resolution breaks statute, or, is it statute? What is it? Or whatever, we wouldn't even have known. That's concerning, like, am I articulating my concern? Like, do we understa, like, that's, and it's not the, this, and now, we did all of that, and I know the people, I know the organizations are wondering, how do they get the money to start helping people? And essentially, we can't really move forward. And I agree with Councilman Quagliani, is that how can we be sure that there are people out there that did not bid because they saw it said "West Haven-based"? And.
There's a couple things to consider. Number one, whatever you decide to do, it starts with the proper resolution, and the challenge now should be to pass that resolution that we know is proper, which is the one before you, and then we have to go and make it right. And if that means a rebid, so be it. Number two, there is a safety net on all this stuff. Every quarter, UHY has to create a report to the Treasury, and that's when they catch these things, if there is something to be caught. This is not gonna be the last time I come before you and ask you to change a resolution. The rulebook's the size of 10 telephone books. It's massive, there's a lot of moving parts. It's gonna happen. In the case of money being spent, we're already transferring money to the school side for their pantries. The other solution may be, you create a second go-around with contingency money, put that out to bid under this new resolution, and see if anybody bids on that. And we exempt people who have awarded money from bidding on it. I think you could do that. That's another possibility. But whatever you do, and I'll have more information for you from the, from the paid professionals, I think the important thing is to pass the proper resolution tonight, then I can go and make the corrections and come back and report. Otherwise, it's just gonna go on and on and on. And, and the school, by the way, which is really a city agency, is exempt from all of this, and they're getting their money.
I appreciate that. It's not just about the schools, so let me say that for the record. I keep all my, every time somebody answers, the kids always, "About the schools." It's not just about the schools. It's about this, this Housing Authority, it's about all of that. But my, my point, Chair, Mr. Chairman, is that who is in charge of reviewing the resolutions that we vote on? We, we, prior to giving it to Mr. Carney and pass this resolution, and this is not the first time this has happened, but I'd like to think it's gonna be the last. I don't know how the rest of the council feels. It's.
This resolution was, the improper resolution was written before the team was on. The new resolutions that come to you are coming from the attorney. We didn't have that, we didn't have that, I mean, I, I actually had nothing to do with the resolution, but I, I know an attorney didn't look at, an ARPA attorney did not look at this resolution before it was presented to you, back then in May.
The original one?
Yeah. Yeah, this one was specifically written by the ARPA attorney.
Oh, man. The original resolution was written by the individual that writes grants, the very beginning ones. My question, my thing is this, if we pass this resolution, like Ken said, he's gonna re, go out to rebid again, and make sure everybody got a chance to bid on it. So, if we do pass the resolution, that's all we're doing, is passing, passing a resolution to start the process over. It's not saying anything else other that now that we're gonna dish out the money, we're gonna have to start the process over rebidding. So, exclude the schools. The other part, we have to, if in order to rebid, we have to pass this resolution. Because the old resolution says that it only contends to people in West Haven.
So, Mr. Chairman, does that mean that the allocations for what was already allocated for the people who bid on it, that will all go away and we start from the beginning?
I would say so.
Oh.
I, I think what happens is you pass this resolution, and I go to the attorneys, and they write an opinion if we have to go back out to bid or not. I, I think I need the resolution first. We go, we pull the original RFP, let the paid professionals make that decision, and they may have something that we're not thinking of right now, but it would be their responsibility.
Ken, you said, we make, so it's not just us. Every city in Connecticut makes quarterly reports, and then the, the federal government, the ARPA people, actually look over everyone's quarterly report. We're not the only city that's done resolutions incorrectly. They're kicking back to everyone.
I don't know of specific examples, but I don't, I don't see this as a huge setback. I, I think the timing could hurt us, but I will say, the other organizations have called me, they're just now preparing their invoices. No, no one's actually produced an invoice other than, than the pantries at the school to say, "We need to be reimbursed." If we pass this resolution, I think we can move quickly if there is a correction to be made, and we can start sending money out as quickly as possible. And I think, from a council standpoint, you pass the right resolution, let the paid professionals tell us if we have to put something back out to, to bid or not.
Thank you.
That's my opinion.
Yeah.
Again, I agree. I agree we need to pass the resolution and have the paid professionals look at it, although I'd also ask them to look at, kinda splitting this in half, because in my mind, the bid that went out, the, the entity that could be aggrieved is, is the entity that's not from West Haven, that services West Haven people. So, in my mind, the West Haven not-for-profits and the West Haven Board of Ed and the West Haven Housing Authority, they, they complied with the bid, right? They're West Haven entities.
Sure.
So, in my mind, I'd like to, to park those, that those, you know, if we have to do anything, those should already be okay, those are, those are acceptable, and then we just need to, we need to put out the other piece of it, you know what I mean? I mean, at, at the end of the day, it's theirs, but I just don't, I don't want, I don't want these not-for-profits and, and West Haven school system and the, and the Housing Authority that, that complied with the bid to have to wait any longer if we don't have to make them wait any longer.
Yeah, the goal is to get the money out as quickly as possible. I, I think if you, if the council passes this resolution, I'll be on this tomorrow, and I'll have this resolved fairly quickly.
Can we do a roll call vote?
Most certainly. Hang on, we gotta read the resolution.
Okay, so we have, we have the motion, and then we have a second, we had our discussion. I'm gonna read what, I'm gonna read the whole resolution, is that okay? Should I do that? Does anybody want that? Yeah. Okay. All right. "To the Honorable City Council of the City of West Haven, your committee, as a council as a whole, to whom was referred the matter of Mayor Nancy R. Rossi's ARPA Committee Investment Plan Regarding Food Bank Support Fund Reports at the Committee on the Second Day of November 2022 to Consider Said Matter." And it, we didn't vote on it yet, so this is strange, because we're not in committee, we're like in committee as a whole. So, I'll just go right to the "whereas." "Whereas the city is in receipt of certain federal coronavirus stimulus funds herein after referred to as ARPA funds, whereas the mayor has submitted to the council an outline plan for the expenditure of ARPA funds, whereas the city council has fiscal responsibility for the appropriation of ARPA funds under Section 4 of the City Charter entitled Supplemental Appropriation, whereas the mayor, her administration, and a panel Citizen Review Committee have executive duties for administering ARPA funds, including but not limited to the purchasing requirements of Chapter 42 of the Code of the City of West Haven, attached here to for, for reference. Whereas the council is required to appropriate funds for projects the council selects to fund, whereas this resolution is intended to supersede and replace previous resolutions made on the same subject, including but not limited to the Food Bank Support Fund Resolution approved by the City Council on a special meeting on May 31st, 2022, resolve that the City Council hereby appropriates funding for the following project: Food Bank Support Fund $400,000. This fund will support not-for-profit community kitchens, food and clothing bank operations that serve the residents of the City of West Haven. Funding will be made available as subgrants to charitable organizations to provide goods and services or invest in infrastructure improvements that address their mission. Community agencies are invited to request funding. Program A, Elderly Services $100,000. Provide funding for a not-for-profit facilitator to develop and manage a program to close the gap on food insecurity for our most vulnerable. It is envisioned that this program would collaborate with the City of West Haven Elderly Services and the West Haven Housing Authority to provide supplemental food to those 65 years and older that are in crisis. The program will provide food and personal hygiene items to participants. Program B is School-Based Services $100,000. Provide funding for a not-for-profit facilitator to develop and manage a program to close the gap on food insecurity for our, our youth. It is envisioned that the program provider will collaborate with the West Haven Board of Education, BOE, to create a process for our students to receive supplemental food. The program provider will be tasked with creating a procedure that allows students pre-K through 12, Board of Ed employees, or parents to request food and/or personal hygiene items when in crisis. This is anticipated to be a year-round program. In addition, the program provider will be required to set up, maintain in-house food pantries at locations, locations chosen by the West Haven Board of Ed during the school year. Program C, General Services $100,000. Provide funding to a not-for-profit facilitator to assist in providing food and/or personal hygiene items to those West Haven residents that may be in crisis. Program D, Infrastructure Improvements $100,000. Provide funding for a not-for-profit organization that may need monetary assistance to develop programming and/or improve infrastructure with the purpose of procuring food, assembling the food, managing distribution and/or storage to the residents of West Haven. Further resolve that Nancy R. Rossi, as the mayor of City of West Haven, shall, A, develop a program narrative and project budget for the ARPA-funded program listed above; B, report said narrative, budget, and resulting expense accounting reports to the City Council for oversight and monitoring no less than once monthly; C, that the monthly reports to the council will continue until said ball funds are expended and final reports are made to the U.S. Department of the Treasury for, for the ARPA-funded projects; D, that the contingency funds shall remain unappropriated until the City Council authorizes transfer to an approved expense account; that, E, that all project cost overruns shall be approved by the City Council before costs are incurred; and F, that all project surpluses be returned to the ARPA Contingency Fund for further action by the City Council. Further resolve that Nancy R. Rossi, as the mayor of City of West Haven, authorize and directed to execute and deliver any and all documents related to this resolution on behalf of the City of West Haven, and to do and perform all acts and things which she deems necessary or appropriate to carry out the terms of such documents, including but not limited to executing and delivering all agreements and documents contemplated by such documents."
Hang on, Stacy.
At this point, we can do the roll.
At this point, we'll do a roll call vote.
Councilman Gary Donovan?
Yes.
Councilwoman Colleen O'Connor?
Yes.
Councilman. Councilman Ronna Quagliani?
Yes.
Councilwoman Bridget Hoskey?
Yes.
Councilwoman Melli Garthwaite?
Yes.
Councilwoman Sarah Acbarali?
Yes.
Councilwoman Robin Wat Hamilton?
Yes.
Councilman Robert Bruno?
Yes.
Councilman Stephen Johnstone?
Yes.
And Chairman Peter Mazzaro?
Yes.
Pass for management. By the majority. Thank you. Excuse me.
Back to, did you lose the agenda? I did too, but you got it? You want mine? Right here, you can give them off mine.
Communication, uh, eight dash twenty-eight, I'm sorry, eight dash fifteen. About three hours, four hours before the meeting, I got a call from Mr. Jackson. Mr. Jackson told me that would be advised, we hold this. Uh, because there's a few problems with the first thing we approved, the $2 million for paving. And they have to straighten that out first before we add any more money to the paving project. He said that would cause a problem and he does not want the city to have any problems forwarding any money to the project until he straightens out the first half. So, we're gonna, we're gonna hold this. Very sorry, that came up about three hours before the meeting. Stacy and I were, were involved in this and so was Diane, we were told to hold it. He sent me a big text today. Certainly.
So, I'm just curious, you know me. Um, so when I look at all of the streets listed, is there a reason why Second Avenue's not on here? Is it because all the potholes were filled and now we're satisfied? Because if...
No, the reason being for that, I, I spoke to the public works, not the director, somebody else. They are still digging up the street because according to the water company, there's many houses on Second Avenue that got lead pipes in it and they gotta remove them. And they gotta be removed by the end of, I think, next summer.
So you're gonna tear the street up pretty good?
Yeah. So that's the reason.
We should probably let people know that so that we don't...
It was in the paper.
The water company said notices out too, I think.
It was in, it was in the paper. Water company made a thing about it and it was in the, in the West Haven, not the West Haven Voice, in the West Haven section of the, of the newspaper, the Register. Wish that was brought to my attention because I said the same thing you did too. All set? All right, moving on. Communication, eight twenty-eight. Video livestream for the city council for the Harriet North Building, courtroom, and the third floor conference room. It was brought to my attention that we did put money aside, $200,000 for this project. And it's been way back in May when we did our budget. And nothing has been done about it. And I came up with the idea with another council person and I think that it would've been feasible for us to take the money out of ARPA, to get the project started, make it go out to bid, so we don't have any more people asking to have this thing livestreamed. And everything could be livestreamed automatically and nothing against Andrew, he's doing a great job, but the city, we did it a long time ago and it never was done. And I would like to, uh, take this opportunity to put up $200,000 and it goes out to bid under the ARPA committee, uh, handle it and we'll get the job done. Is there...
Well, we need the motion first.
Well, I'll, I'll, I'll make the motion. I'd like to make a motion to approve the, the resolution for communication on eight twenty-eight, the video livestreaming for the city.
Motion.
All right?
Motion.
I'll second.
That's fine.
First, whatever the heck it is.
Thank you. Discussion.
So, question, where's the two, the $200,000 for this? This is in the IT department?
No, it's in the capital approval right now.
Oh, it's under bonding, we wouldn't use it?
Which will save the city $200,000 on bonding.
I'm aware, thank you.
I'm just...
No, yeah. That was my question.
So, Ken, we got here, does this already go out to bid?
So, the answer is yes, I would not use those numbers at all, or that bid. The ARPA attorney and accountant told me that this is completely reimbursable under ARPA funds. Other towns and cities have done it. But I would put this whole thing back out to bid and hopefully get a much better price.
Okay, good, because I was, yeah, I was looking at the numbers, I was like...
And I hope to give you back some money.
I know $200,000 is more than enough to satisfy this cost, but...
The expense is gonna be if we have to crack the ceiling open, the asbestos. That's gonna, that's gonna hurt us.
Right.
So we're gonna try and avoid that.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Yeah, it's three rooms, it's this room, Harriet North, and the third floor conference room.
Also, may I say something? Those figures there, that quote you looked at was back in April. And here it is, here it is in November, the prices are gonna increase, like a lot of other, other things in this country are increasing prices. And I don't, wouldn't think that price would be the same. So, I came up with the figure of $200,000 to be safe, uh, just in case. But like I said, if it's, it's less, the money will come back.
Right.
I get that. And my, I think my question, because on top here it says communication eight to eight, twenty-eight. Is that part of, if we okay this, that doesn't include this?
No, just say in your motion, you approve it going back out to bid.
We're doing a motion for the $200,000 and that's pretty much it.
Make it clear in your motion here.
This can...
So, I have it. Yeah, you might've gotten a copy of something that referenced that prior bid, but we have since changed it, I have the new wording, if you'd like me to read it before you all vote on it.
Yeah, I would, I would, anyway.
I'm not gonna read the whole whereas's.
So, I'm curious in that we keep sending out all these separate bids and, I don't know, I'm just thinking that when you look at the boardwalk monitoring cameras, we might need to lay wire and buy these things to do all these things. Shouldn't we maybe be, be combining these things to get the best cost? And we keep piecemealing all these separate projects that if we did it as a whole, I would just think that we could get a better price.
My, if I, if I can respond to that, a couple of things, you're a hundred percent correct. In this case, we're talking outside cameras, different equipment, um, digging in the ground, that represents the police cameras down at the boardwalk. That's a whole different animal. Here, we're talking about interior cameras, dealing with asbestos, doing live streaming, two, really two different companies, two different, I don't see the opportunity to combine the two. In fact, one of the issues with the first bid that I see is they're carrying the IT part of it, putting a markup on it and charging us. I think if we broke this bid up where, that we have an IT company and a camera company, the price will come down, in my opinion. The other thing is, on, on those police cameras, you know, they've been held up for so long, we finally have something moving there. And, um, the plan there is to start off in that area and then the police are gonna direct me to the next area and we're gonna use change order power for the same company and the same designer to do the next sections and we'll, we'll get savings from that.
I guess I just think that in the grand, the bigger scheme of things, Ken, um, and I know it's, I'm like 12 hours late on this and all the different meetings, but when I think about the child development roof, right? And all the other roofs in the city that we're doing on the schools. How much better of a price would we have gotten if we just sit here and say, this is the plan, this is all the roofs in the city that need to get done? Let's all go, go out to bid and get a better price. We just constantly, and I know you can't solve it sitting there, standing there today, I'm just saying that, you know, you even look at this broadband access other, there's almost a half a million dollars that are reserved for proposed projects and then, I mean, it just seems that we consistently do that, you know? We don't ever buy in bulk.
Actually, well, the playscape's we bought in bulk, the three...
No, I'm, I'm just saying that, you know, like the Board of Ed doesn't partner with the city, like the Child Development Center and like they're all, or the firehouses, if they needed roofs, new roofs, roofs.
So that's a good point.
It's just...
The problem there is, believe it or not, is the roofs are reimbursable. And the state has, is paying for a lot of that, they have their own roof. You can't combine a city property. It's because, in, in fact, you probably realize, never realized it, but if you go down the hallway, you notice the new carpet stops and the old carpet begins. That's because we got state reimbursement for the Board of Ed side and they wouldn't give us a dime from the city side. They actually measured the wires and the pipes to figure out how much the reimbursement was. We can never mix them for that reason.
Got, understood, thank you.
Anybody else? Yes.
Hi, Ken.
Hi.
Um, so, I have a question regarding, um, the scope of work for each of these rooms. Would that be included in each of these estimates or is that gonna be laid out separately?
I, I, I think what'll happen is they will give us, we'll ask for a price for all three rooms done together to get the best possible price.
Okay.
If we think it's gonna be higher than we wanna spend, we can do a deduct in, in the bid and say, if you take out the third floor conference room, as an example, what would that credit be? And then we can evaluate that.
Okay, and if anything needs to be ripped out, would that be included with the, with that scope of work for, for that room?
Yes.
And included with how much it's gonna cost to put each individual thing in, um, regarding like the audio system, speakers, is that gonna be included?
Everything will be included, I don't know if it'll be broken down like that bid. Usually when they're broken down like that, you pay a lot more money.
Right.
Uh, we're more interested in give us a lump sum price.
Okay.
Give us a bond to guarantee that price.
Right.
And we don't care how much you save or how much it costs, you're gonna give it to us for that price.
But we'll, we'll see the line of work that's gonna be done.
You'll see the scope, it'll include everything, yeah.
Okay, great, thank you.
Absolutely.
I'll say.
Anyone else?
Um, this may sound silly, but they're removing the asbestos, so they'll be removing it from the entire floor or just from above where the three rooms are?
So it would be selective demolition, um, you kinda see it here when we put these in years ago. This would've been much better served to go on the ceiling, we couldn't afford it. You may have something like this. And if we have to remove some asbestos, it'll be a very limited area under a glove bag or something and not the whole room. And that asbestos is found above the ceiling in two places. It's on the, um, steel decking that's sprayed on and it's starting to fall off. So when you move a tile, you, you get asbestos dust. So, and tiles have to be removed, we have to bring an asbestos team in to do that.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else?
Well, I'm gonna read the, uh, I'm gonna read it so you all know the wording, I'm not sure if everybody has a copy of it in front of them. I'm gonna bypass, if you don't mind, the cookie cutter portions of the, um, resolution. Okay. So, "Resolve that the city council hereby appropriates funding for the filing project. Public access communications equipment, $200,000. Funds to be used to engineer, purchase, install, and commission audiovisual communication equipment that will enhance public access to public meetings by providing the necessary infrastructure for live telecast, recording, and meeting conference communication. Equipment to serve the, the council chambers, Harriet North Meeting Room, and the third floor conference room. Final bid award and vendor contract shall be submitted to the city council for ratification prior to contract execution." And then the rest is the cookie cutter portions of our, all of our other resolutions. And we would like a roll call vote? Okay.
So you, if I may, you have a purchasing ordinance in place and that or, and that ordinance demands that the lowest responsible bidder receive the job. The council does not have the ability to come back and, and ratify a bid. There's a person ordinance involved. If the council's gonna ratify the bid, that suggests that you're stepping outside of the person ordinance. No one picks a bid in the city. The, the bid itself, uh, process picks the bidder. So you gotta be careful of that. And, and what would happen is you would lose bidders. People would say, I gotta go for the city council, my bid, I'm, I'm not, I'm not bidding on the job. You know, the day we open the bids in this room publicly, that's who wins the job. If they gotta go through another process and come back to the city council, you're gonna lose bidders.
I didn't make up the wording.
Well...
Who wrote the, so this is, goes back to who writes this? Who wrote this?
It's the first I saw, first I saw tonight.
Who wrote this?
I think Rich Frye wrote it.
No.
No?
Well, I think that was, that it was the grants writer and, um...
Okay, I, I'd like to be heard. I'd like to be heard, 'cause I have the, I feel like I repeat myself a lot and then...
Can I see that?
There is. And, and I think I, I, I might've mentioned it to the grants writer, to, to him. I do not, do not understand why our grants writer, if he did, would be writing our resolutions. They should be going, if somebody does write it, they should be coming and being vetted or reviewed by council. Like, I do not understand. Is that in his job description? Like, am I missing something? Whose job is it to write our resolutions?
I don't know. It used to be Mike, Michael did all the resolutions.
He would do them with the corp counsel, I believe.
But, but, well, we have a new admin, she should be doing that. This, this, and then this is her job and then she needs to be going to Lee. This is unacceptable.
So the...
Do you have an opinion?
The meat of it has...
I, I mean, you would raise your hand if you had an opinion.
Is that what we're getting banned?
I'm not looking for an agreement, like, I'm literally like, I don't under, whose job is it? Where's Lee? Is he here?
He was here.
Ken, I mean, what, what I'd recommend is just like you said, so, so we don't, you know, we, we understand the team wasn't in place for the food...
Sure.
...resolution, but any, to me, that's the mo, that's just as significant as anything else that we do. So really, your, your, your group that we appropriated should be reviewing, um, these for, these resolutions.
They should be writing the resolutions on it. They should, you, for now on, going forward, the ARPA attorney should write all the resolutions. We have the money to do it, they know it, let them do it. But that resolution, with the exception of the ratification, is fine, it's just, the ratification part's gotta be crossed out.
But do you understand, like, and I say, and I, I, I say this, that he should not be the one telling us that there is a problem with the resolution. This should not become, this is not his job. I don't, and somebody needs to stay in their lane and the grants writer should not be writing resolutions for this body. And do, if we need a legal opinion, then we should get one from Lee. Our, our corp counsel should be stepping up to say, mm, you do not have a law degree to do this. It's unacceptable, it is unacceptable.
May I say something?
May I say something?
Of course, Chairman.
I got a phone call today, and that was, they, I was asked, how much money you wanna put into the resolution? And I says, keep it at two hundred thousand dollars. Now, Rich Pryor called me, I, I said, I thought he was writing the resolution. Not, maybe not so. I really didn't ask who was writing the resolution, he only asked me how much of a figure to put in there, and I told him. I don't really know who wrote this. And about the other thing, staying in the lane, that individual was already told by me also to stay in his lane. And by many other people too. The only thing I could tell you, I.
But Chairman, if it's supposed to be Diane, if Diane's supposed to be writing our resolutions, then she needs to do her job. I, I don't know whose job it is, but somebody should do their job, just.
I, I think that just for like our regular council resolutions, yes. Yes. However, these, these things that are.
She don't write it.
Yeah, she's, she would not be able to come up with the proper.
But it should be somebody's job. And then it should be vetted by an attorney.
Right.
Okay, so do we have the vote to get that line item? I vote to remove that line. I make a motion to remove that line.
Remove.
I have to amend the motion.
I'm, I'm, I move to amend the motion, to remove that line.
Okay. The whole, the whole sentence, the last sentence.
Yeah.
All favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes.
And can we now do a roll call vote on the?
Yes.
Amended original motion?
Yes.
Councilman Gary Donovan?
Yes.
Councilwoman Colleen O'Connor?
Yes.
Councilman Ronald Quagliani?
Yes.
Councilwoman Bridget Hosky?
Yes.
Councilwoman Melli Garthwaite?
Yes.
Councilwoman Sarah Akbarali?
Yes.
Councilwoman Robin Watt Hamilton?
Yes.
Councilman Robert Bruno?
Yes.
Councilman Stephen Johnstone?
Yes.
And Chairman Peter Mazzaro?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Oh, that's exciting.
Okay. Any discussion on any ARPA projects, any suggestions? Yes?
I know that the, um, high school was supposed to get new fields. They were supposed to get a new football field, they were supposed to get a new softball field. And out of the kindness of their heart, the money that they were going to use to do those projects was given to the city. And the Board of Ed was promised that they would have new fields by the time they took the field this past, the season, when we started.
September.
September. They did not move forward.
No.
And there is no money. So, everything that they were going to do for themselves didn't happen. So, they didn't break ground, materials didn't get ordered, there was nothing, like.
It's all designed though.
It is all, oh, I know, it's all designed.
I got a price of two point five million, which was negotiated down, value engineered. With two point five million.
Can I just finish? I, and I, and I know.
I'm sorry.
My issue is this, and, and I'm not trying to strongarm anybody, but this is my issue. It's gonna be in our next bonding package. That is how we're gonna pay for it. So they, they had the money to do it, but they gave the money to the city to put in our contingency fund so that we would have more money and look healthier, which is a great idea. But come the next bonding package, that money's going to be sitting there, and.
Is ARPA funding authorized you to do that?
Yes, and I'd get that writing for you.
No, no, you didn't. I, I'm just wanting to give the full scenario, that the Board of Ed, out of the kindness of their heart, gave us money. We did not follow through, and they're waiting for us to vote on a bonding to do all of this work. And we, I don't feel like we can really say no, because.
Right.
But do we really want to do it for bonding and pay it out? Or get on it now and give them what they would have had, had they not given us back all their money? But go ahead, Ken, please give your.
So, for two point five, we get a new football field, which is two years past its life. We get a brand new track, which is unusable, cannot use a track anymore at the high school. And we get a softball field that has drainage issues that would become a synthetic softball field. That's what two point five gets us.
And what I, and, and I will say, 'cause I'm there, it is underwater. Like, it is, it is, you, you just can't. And I just wanna stress, had they not done a favor for the city, and people were like, oh, you know, you, you can say, well, the Board of Ed got their own money, they, not ARPA, they got.
Esser.
Esser money. They did, and they did everything they were supposed to do, but the money that they were gonna use to pay for this project, they gave to the city. And we did not, um, uphold our end of the bargain. And, but, when we get the bonding package, it'll be in there. That's how we're gonna pay for it, I guess. That's my idea.
Councilman.
And, no, I, I actually, all, all favor of doing things for the kids, there's no doubt. Just to be on the transparent part, how much did they give back to the city?
Two point eight.
They gave back two point eight. So that's even, that's, that's even, to me, is a no-brainer at my end, uh, just me speaking. So I would be in favor of, of doing that if we have the funding for it. Thank you.
Can I just say something, if I was one? And, and I just, I don't know if you all remember, but during the budget season, I told Neil to stop giving us back his surplus and to use it to stop, like, do not do it. And out of the kindness of his heart, he did it, two point eight million, and we did this.
That, that, that two point eight, by the way, just to be clear, was because of COVID. There was not maintenance going on in the schools, we weren't paying security guards. We didn't have to pay the buses, we weren't doing maintenance projects, our food bill was down. And that two point eight, which our checkbook, our Board of Ed checkbook sits over here in the city hall, we don't have a checkbook. It stayed in that checkbook, and when we were ready to go and do the field, we were told there's a, that you lose that money at the end of the year, it goes back to the city council, and you have to re-request it. That's what we were told.
But we weren't told that you gave it back to us.
Yeah.
You all set?
I'm all set.
Councilman.
So if we're looking at the, um, two point five million, are we a little short in the contingency? Am I reading that right?
Yeah, you would have to go into proposed projects, reserve projects, and you'd have to move funds out of there.
Council.
May I say something? Uh, Ken, where do we stand with the Art Center?
The Art Center is being designed right now, uh, with the one point five million funds that we have from the state. It's not enough to finish that project. Um, it's fifteen thousand square feet. To create an art center slash community center, you need, you need the three and a half. Otherwise, it just sits unfinished, year after year.
My opinion is that everybody in the council, look at the reserves and whatever you think that we could squeeze the money from, come up with suggestions. I'm not gonna make, I, I mean, I got my own suggestions, but I do wanna put aside a million dollars in the future for paving some more streets that this city needs. Listen, I agree, this is my own opinion, I agree what we did with the ARPA money to a certain extent. Personally, with this ARPA money, I would've just done all infrastructure for the city. And the city, everybody would've benefited by it. We did all different projects for all different things. Ken Carney's team is going crazy, we're going crazy, we're getting ridiculed in everything that we do. My thing is, is if somebody didn't close themselves in the door and at least talk to other people to find out what can we do for the best for the city, and everybody would've benefited by it, you know? Storm, drains, sidewalks, paving the street, streets. This twenty-nine million dollars would've took care of that, and would've been no questions, no problems, no fighting, nobody bickering at each other, would've been done, sealed, and delivered. So, something like this for the high school, that the kids play on and everything, I think we should look at our reserves here. We'll call another meeting, and we'll come up with something. If everybody's agreeable with that, it's fine with me too. Yes.
So, I think I, you know, I had mentioned it in the past, that I'm, I think, you know, we have to look to kind of see what projects we have in the bonding pipeline and, and try to take a look and see what we can move over, um, to ARPA. Because, and we haven't seen a, a draft five-year plan in, um, yet. But I do believe that, you know, in the, in the next few years, there's potentially mill rate implications. And I think we need to do everything we could do to, to, to drive that down. So that's, that's why we, I, I, I'm looking at what, what the items are that we have scheduled in our capital plan for FY twenty-three and twenty-four, and, and see if we could potentially come up with, um, with moving those, those figures from, from a bonding ordinance where, um, we and our children and our, you know, thirty years or whatever it is, are gonna have to pay for this as opposed to, you know, being able to, to utilize, you know, ARPA funding. And I know, the biggest one that sticks out to me is Washington School. So, I mean, I, I mean, we could, we could debate the validity of a project or not, but, you know, I would think that, that, um, a new school, especially one that's a hundred years old, um, for our children is probably pretty high on the list. At least it's high on my list.
Rodney, um, just so you know, because that is reimbursed at the rate of sixty-seven percent, any money from any other source goes towards the state, not us. So if it's a forty-five million dollar project, if you said, Ken, take five million and put it towards that school, it goes off the state's, the state gets that, not us.
That's just for new construction?
That's for any state reimbursed project. If, if you get a donation, or you pull from another grant, the state takes it first. You gotta pay the sixty-seven percent, then the city benefits.
So it'd be helpful, I know that, it, it, well, maybe I could ask the finance director to do it, to go through the, the, the capital budget and identify what's, if any, what projects have some portion of, of reimbursement from, from the state, right? So, so we know that we have to stay away from those projects, right?
Yeah, so the only one would be the Washington School. The two big ones, um, coming to you in bonding, the two biggest ones are four point two million for Carrigan Boiler and piping, that is not subject to state reimbursement, and two point five million for the fields. Those are the two big ones. Neither are reimbursable.
And what concerns me is I don't really see either of those listed in our capital.
But Carrigan's in there.
Domestic piping, two point one million dollars.
And there's, there's another line for boilers, four point two.
Well, I think the thing with the schools happened after this was.
Yeah.
I don't see a line for boilers, but if you say it's in here.
There's, there's four point two total.
I asked about it before, I remember.
These are all the Board of Ed.
I think it's in the next year, they may have staggered the years, but it's definitely in there.
It's nothing without.
No, it's two point one and two point one.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
So that's, so that's the big ask for bonding, in that one. Thank you.
Councilman.
So, Chairman, you mentioned paving, how do we usually get our paving done? We bond that?
Nine hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars is in the, in the project for, uh, the program for this year.
Can I ask a question?
No, don't.
So, in your, um, professional opinion, 'cause I know you have one, where would you, where would you think that we could get the two point? If we were to say, okay, we'll take two million, and it'd either be for the fields or to help pay for the boilers?
I think.
Where would you?
Yeah, I think what I would do is I would reduce the housing grant from a million to nine hu, to one hundred thousand. The one hundred thousand would become a micro grant for people who can't close on a house or close on a rent. That gives you nine hundred thousand.
I love that.
Um, I think I would, uh, take a million out of contingency, leaving you one point two, so now you have two million. And then, I think I would take the four eighty-five to close the loop. But the big question, I know this is the third rail here, is the million dollar for the library. I don't know what's gonna happen with that.
Oh, excuse me. So you said the four eighty-five for broadband access?
Yeah, it's, um.
I mean, what's going on with the public health outreach? What is, I'm sorry?
Yeah, I'm sorry, that's a.
Yeah. So my understanding there is that that is gonna be turned into, well, there's a debate right now. There's, there's the Health Department that wants to use that money to create their own inoculation site here in City Hall. And then the second option is to.
Go back to them and say, there's not a, uh-uh, don't bet on it.
And then the second issue is, there are organizations, not-profit, like Hill Health and stuff, who are already performing that service, and that, those funds would go to them. Those are the two, that's what I'm hearing.
No, that's what we're more in line with, I think, when we were having our discussions. But is there a thought of how much that they need? I mean, is there, because I'm thinking six hundred and eighty thousand, we're at the, I mean, you can go to, I'm getting my flu shot at CVS. What's today, Friday?
Yep.
Um, you know, like, and, and it's free, like, you just walk in and they'll give you your flu shot. So, it just seems, and, you could get shingles there, I mean, they have like a list like this long, you just pick everything you want.
I think the six eighty represents a timeframe, not necessarily, like, they can do multiple years. But I think if you cut maybe two hundred grand out of that?
I think you're cutting six hundred grand out of it.
Yeah.
If, so if we were to do, and, um, as Councilman Quagliani said, you know, we have the things at Carrigan, what they need, and then we have the, um, field, if you were to choose either one of those, would that work be able to be done in the, the money spent in the timeframe that we have?
So the fields are already designed, if the, if the fields were approved, I could start this summer and be ready for next September. The boilers, I'm just beginning the design, I've got at least six, seven months. And I've got a strong message from the administration that they're definitely bonding for that. The fields, I don't see on the bonding list.
Yeah, it comes before us to vote as to whether or not.
I understand, I understand, yeah.
I know what that's wrong.
I'm just telling you what, what I'm hearing, there's a.
No, I know, it's, so I just think that the, but no, thank you for the, um. What were your other ideas, Chairman, as far as, um, projects? You said the paving.
Yeah, a million dollars for the paving. That's it. But, there's, there's projects here we could take money away from that I don't see happening. Be honest with you. And I think it would cover the fields and it would cover part of the, uh, boiler or the pipe change in Carrigan School. Yes.
So Ken, I, I got a, a quick question for you. Um, so, I know there's some money put aside for this, but I don't, don't remember, I think it was like a million dollars, but we, we have a problem with, with our homeless population growing along the shoreline, right?
Mm-hmm.
And today I was involved in it, and the Columbus House was down there and gave us like some great help, right? And I got told that we don't have any two-on-one to call in, when you, when, when they call two-on-one, it goes into like New Haven or Hammond or what have you, and, and they don't get a lot of help from the city of West Haven, right? So, excuse me, I know there's money put aside for that, but is there anything that can be done? You know, we're going into winter to jumpstart that, where, where they would have some sort of help. Like, you know, I don't know, I don't know how to achieve it or how, how we can get to that. But it's a growing problem along our shoreline, along, uh, some other streets that were mentioned to me today from the people from the Columbus House. So, uh, they were a great help to us, but I'd like for the city of West Haven to have our own help. So, h- how do we achieve that? There's money put aside for that, if, I, I, I think we put some money aside.
You, you mean ARPA funds aside?
Yes. Yes.
So, the original concept was a million dollars, we would actually go out, grab a three-family that we, that we got back because of lack of taxes, you know, claim back, renovate that and create a homeless shelter. Now, the problem is the ongoing cost to running that. So, we talked about possibly putting that out to bid, have an outside organization run it. You know, number one, that's not gonna be ready anytime soon, that's gonna be a year and a half, two years down the road. And number two, um, you know, I, there are, there are managers here in town that would be in charge of that, and I tried to communicate with those people and there wasn't a lot of interest in, interest in...
I respect that, so I was wondering, like, if we were able to, like, have two people on a salary for like an outreach program where somebody working, let's say, out of City Hall or whatever, would be able to be a number that they can call when they're in need, and we'd be able to, like, I'm not saying, saying, like, put aside whatever, three-hundred thousand dollars, one-fifty for each salary, whatever, whatever would be, or, or a hundred grand for each salary, and then there'd be money to put them up somewhere. But I know there was a million dollars put aside for it, and there's, there's nothing really gonna be done with that. So, there's money there to be had, if, if there's anything that could be done in that, in that.
Don't, don't forget, though, you've got a lot of grants that are available for that.
Okay.
You don't, what you're talking about now, I think, is using ARPA funds for one-time projects?
Well, at least over the next two years, we could fund it.
But I, I think there's other money to fund that, is what I'm saying.
Okay.
Not, not ARPA money, I'm saying.
That's what he can, that's his language.
Just, just a quick thing. I came up with three, three million eighty-five thousand dollars that we could use for the schools, the field, school field and the pi- piping from the reserve.
How, how did you get there?
You really wanna know?
Yes, we do.
The housing crisis fund, I knocked it down to five-hundred thousand. The library, zip. Public health, six-hundred thousand. Just leave them eighty thousand. Small businesses, take five-hundred thousand. And the four-eighty-five, come up with three million eighty-five that we could use for the other things.
So, that's two-point-six from the reserve projects, right? And then you've...
Don't even touch the reserve money, leave the reserve money alone.
No, no, I'm saying the reserve projects, not the contingency.
Yeah, right.
What you just gave us is two-point-six million.
I use my phone, my phone's not the greatest thing. Five-hundred thousand, a million dollars, six-hundred thousand, five-hundred thousand, and four-eighty-five.
Oh, the four-eighty-five, okay. I didn't see that, yep. So, you're a little over three million.
Yes, Councilman.
All right, so you're, you're, we're already saying in your scenario that nothing for the library, but we need a library. What I would like to know, um, I don't want to lose that money, of course, but do you know anything about the plans of the library, and if they, if, if we did allot it to them, are they on target with getting it?
So, what I know is, my understanding is that the, I had suggested to the library at a meeting in my office, I said, go after the CVS. It's already built, it's bigger than what they could build, don't close on the land, consider the CVS, it's across the street from where the old library was. I'm hearing that that CVS, the asking price is around five million, I heard.
Five and a half.
They showed me a set of plans on a piece of property that they purchased, that I estimated was between seven and nine million to build. It's a difficult site, at the time, construction costs were very high, the plans were just conceptual plans, they had no detail, no engineering. And then, they had a fundraiser recently at West River Hall, and thirty people showed up.
So...
You guys know I'm in big trouble after this meeting, right? You'd have to, like, move out of the state, so, go ahead.
Well, we asked Colleen when she was here, and she said the new building cost from five-hundred, five million dollars, went up to eight million dollars. I mean, I don't see them doing this and timing it up by twenty-twenty-four to take them million dollars, I don't see it.
And I have a problem with the CVS site. My problem is, is that it takes a lot of money off the tax rolls, so, I don't know what they're gonna do.
The landlords of the CVS site also want a great big non-refundable deposit to even talk about buying it, it was like two-hundred-and-fifty thousand, and that only gives you talking rights for like ninety days. If you wanted to continue to, to try to get it, it would cost another two-hundred-and-fifty thousand, like, the CVS building, right now, the landlords are just being too greedy. There's quite a few offers for it already, like, the library was way down the bottom of their list.
That doesn't upset me, 'cause I'd rather not see it go off the tax rolls. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
I know you added that up on your phone and whatnot, but I would like to agree with Councilwoman Robin Watt Hamilton, I, I wouldn't be in favor of taking a full million dollars from the library without at least having some sort of a plan in front of us on what, what they're gonna do, I, I just wouldn't...
Oh, it's only, only suggestion, I didn't say what was gonna be done.
You wanna talk about three and a half million dollars for an art center, I'll talk about it, but, but not a million dollars for a library.
What, you take a million dollars from the art center? You do that? Leave the library alone.
Yes?
Mr. Chairman, so, I think we've come, and this is just my opinion, sitting here listening to everybody, I think we've come to the crossroad of, we have to choose what is a need and what is a want. And the thing I'm looking at here, and I have to agree with Councilman Bruno, if you were to compare the two, the library is more of a need and the art center is a want. And listen, I've got the video footage from two-thousand-five that I support the arts in full. The art classes, the paint, it played a large role in my life. But, we've been asking for a business plan, we haven't gotten one, we haven't heard from the, the arts, I don't wanna call them the people, the Arts Commission, if you will. If there's no plan, and Ken has stated it numerous times, we are on the clock here to figure this stuff out. To me, that is the, it's the largest chunk sitting there at three and a half million, I just can't sit here and take a million, and, and this is not a twelvency attacking you, we're just brainstorming, but I can't justify taking a million dollars from the library but leaving the art center three and a half million alone, when we just haven't heard from them or gotten a business plan of any kind. So, that, that's just how I feel.
So, the idea of getting a business plan prior to, um, knowing what's, what that's gonna look like, there doesn't seem to be an organization strong enough in town right now to make that happen. But there are large organizations that would come in, take that building over, assume all of the cost for the building, and that's the bid that we're looking at pursuing. Uh, you know, put it out to bid to a large organization and say, okay, whoever can pay all the costs of operating this building, you know, a multi-year contract, it's your building, you maintain it, you have to open up to the community of West Haven and all that, all those stipulations, we're just not ready for a business plan with a building that hasn't even been designed yet. And it's being designed. And the other problem is, you know, you've already got multi-millions of dollars into this building over the years, and it's, that's no fault of anybody here, it's just how it went down. You know, it, it's a, a new roof, a metal roof, solar panels, all new windows, you know, it's, columns rebuilt, it's just been a lot of money spent already. Yeah. It's hard to say.
I, I, I think that we need to, oh, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, no, keep looking at me, I'm sorry, I guess I was done.
I, I think, I, I don't think the decision is gonna be made today, um, I think the Councilman had a great suggestion, I think we need to know what the larger, um, projects are, we need to know what they're looking at. And I think that the message is also is that, once it, once we decide to pay for it in the bonding, we're not replacing it with something else. Like, the goal is to do, as Councilman Quagliani said, is to, the tax burden of the future.
Yeah, introduce it, yeah. Great.
So, I, I mean, I think we should schedule another meeting, come back with ideas, maybe Ken, you could think about some of the stuff we said. But I know the promise is out there that the Fields, to get them done, is going to be part of the bonding package. And, 'cause we took two-point-eight million dollars from the Board of Ed.
Anyone else? Yes?
Sorry, Chairman, one thing, um, Ken, different change of tune.
Sure.
Where do we stand with the transfer station permit and all that jazz?
So, the transfer station is actually moving ahead quite nicely, the city has secured the land that they wanna put it on, it's now within our control. The designer has already been chosen, and he has already started designing. I, I believe that's gonna happen fairly quickly. The other large one is the million dollars for the Paint and Park Fieldhouse, that is in contract, but we have a firm ready to design that, that'll go pretty quickly, 'cause that's like a Butler-type building. You, you could squeeze the Fields out, though, if you did the housing, public health and broadband, you'd almost be there. And that would take two and a half million off your bonding.
Could you ask the Board of Ed if they have any money to help?
So...
Or anything in the bottom of their purse?
The ans- I can answer that for you, so, the challenge now is, we're going out for the lecture hall. When that bid comes back, we're gonna know what we have available, um, to spend, 'cause i- if it comes in at the full four million, it kinda puts them at the edge, if it comes in less, they'll have funds. But the plan I, I just talked about gets you to almost two, I'll talk to them and see if they have anything, a half a million.
And I know it's, um, a lot to ask, but I'll ask, I don't mind to ask, I mean, maybe they, maybe they do, I mean, not just in the ester funds, but maybe in something else that they weren't able to complete or...
Right, right.
You know? If we can, they can bring a half a million to the table, would be great.
I'll, I'll have an answer for you soon with that.
Is that, anyone else? Yes?
Uh, Ken, I have a quick question.
Sure.
I don't remember off the top of my head how much the playscapes cost. Can you give me a rough idea?
Yeah, we, we had gotten four-fifty in grants.
Okay.
And we spent the four-fifty, and that gave us Haley, McRill, the Housing Authority, and then the Board of Ed spent ninety on the, um, lab for the ADA children at Haley, and that's being done now.
Okay. Um, I, I did get an email from the Savin Rock Community School, PTA, and they asked me to come out and meet with them.
Yeah.
Their playground is horrific.
Mm-hmm.
It's, have you seen it?
Well, I, I was involved in, in that, so, so there's two problems there. One is, it's a very wet area, and when we poured the rubber for that playscape, we were given a change order for like fifty thousand dollars to dig down, get all the muck out, put down stone and all this other stuff, we didn't have it. So, we put the, the rubber over it with the understanding that it wasn't gonna perform as, as good as it could. The bigger problem is vandalism. Uh, we have kids burning holes in slides, uh, we have, uh, swings being ripped off, we have our basketball nets being ripped off, it's a real problem down there.
Right. So, right now, have you seen the ripples in it that are a trip hazard?
They are. Uh, it, it may come down to us putting mulch over it and calling it a day.
Okay.
We, we don't have the substructure to support the, the, um...
Is there any way to get a substructure in there?
Yep, we gotta rip everything up, we gotta dig down, we, we had this problem at the high school, when we did the last parking lot, uh, we had the same flooding problem. We spent four-hundred-and-twenty thousand dollars to get the water out of there.
Okay.
And this was a fifty thousand dollar change order, and it'd be more now because we finished everything, and then when you start doing it, it grows.
Right.
It's a real problem.
It is, so, the, um, I know that, um, there are some children in wheelchairs that are there, they can't use anything on the playground there, 'cause there's nothing there for them.
If, if you, if you go to Haley and you go around the back of the school, what we're finding is, for a lot less money, we're painting the playgrounds on, on the, on the pavement. You get all the games, multiple kids can play at once, nobody falls, and really high-end stuff. We're spending like twenty, thirty thousand dollars doing that, we're getting a much better response from the teachers, no- nothing's vandalized, and, and a lot more kids can play on it at the same time.
Okay. Is there anything that we can do now? They, they, um, the ladies at the PTA told me that they went to the Board of Ed, they were told they didn't have any money, even though...
They, they, they gave it to me, so...
Okay.
So, what I got is, I got, um, I got the playscape people down there pricing the slide down.
Okay.
And then, I'm looking at possibly just putting mulch over the rubber and calling it a day.
Okay, so you're working on it, okay. Is there any way we could get, um, some sort of shade? 'Cause there's no shade there, some sort of...
There, oh, I, I'm agreeing, there is none there.
And they fry all summer long out there.
Yeah, I know. There, there's two ways to do it, one is to put in a big carport-type structure that's gonna cost, you know, a buck fifty or something, and the other option is to do the fabric off the school with posts, and that's not gonna last very long.
Okay, even with sun umbrella?
Well, we could, we, we could do, um, well, those things don't last long, we, we could do large umbrellas, but who takes them in at night?
Yeah.
They get vandalized, I'll, I'll think, I'll think about it.
Okay, thank you, I appreciate it.
But there's no trees or anything either.
No, there's no trees, there's nothing, it's all blacktop right now.
So, can I ask a question?
Sure.
I mean, I've seen Savin Rock School, and I was, I went there, was it last year? 'Cause they were having some problems with vandalism, and they are in the sun, it's, and it's blacktop, whole playground, it's all blacktop. So, I love the idea about the paint, but when you think about it, and it's not you, but when you think about Savin Rock and the condition that that playscape is in, are they, is it the worst in the city, you know? And what's the, you know, Pagels got a new one, Forest School got a new one, you know? Are, is it Savin Rock is the last one to get fixed, and should we be looking at that and, you know? How did Forest got a grant, right?
Uh, yeah, I, to go, do a nice playscape, I need one-twenty-five, that's what I need, to do, to do it, from, from scratch, that would be rubber, and maybe the answer is you put it on another part of the building where we don't have the, the rubber area, you know, the water area issue. But one-twenty-five, I, I get off the state bid list.
But is there another school that you said the Board of Ed gave you, that, is there another elementary school that has that problem?
Uh, no.
Is Carrigan, like, how's their playscape and their situation? I've been, it's...
There's no playscape there, no.
No, I know, but they're basketball courts, I know they have basketball courts and they're, I, they do.
Yeah, it's basketball there.
And I'm just wondering, we're, we have this money where we're talking about parks, is Carrigan School or Savin Rock, what other park is in, oh, I know the beach, so don't say the beach, um, but what other park is in the, the second district if it's not Savin Rock School? It's kinda, you know, the first district.
Is it Third Avenue Park in the second district, I think?
Third Avenue Park isn't...
No?
It's the third district.
Third, oh, right, third district, yeah.
So, I'm just wondering, like, I'm wondering, and just, is all the money for the parks spent?
Yes.
It's all spent?
Yes.
Well, maybe we should allocate some money, 'cause if you look at it, as the Councilwoman in the fifth has said, all, every district should have a place for kids to go.
I, I, I would say, I think, I think if you went to the Board of Ed and you said to them, what do you want at Savin? I think the answer would be a ground-level playscape, I really do. Maintaining these things, the vandalism, the cost of maintaining them, and only a limited amount of kids can use them.
Okay.
Yeah, they're, they're telling me, and, and I mean, we need money for that, we need, you know, twenty, thirty thousand dollars for that, but the ground ones work much better.
So, um, the summer camp, um, the entire population that goes there is, there, we have a lot of handicapped children there, so the, the ladies were asking...
Yes, it's the summer school.
Right, the ladies from the PTA were asking for something like, um, Pagels playground.
If we, if we do that, it'd be one-twenty-five.
One-twenty-five.
Right. But what she's saying is true, that this, what we call the special ed summer program is housed at Savin Rock School over the summer for the six weeks.
So, I'm building a, uh, an ADA playscape right now at Haley, ninety thousand, I could do one at, over there, for ninety.
I would like to do that, I don't know what, how everyone else hears.
Why don't you ask me about that check? You wanna do, go.
I would like us to do that.
Thank you, I'm all set, Chairman, I'm sorry.
Anybody else? Well, number nine, I'm Jordan.
Motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Awesome.
You guys have a great night.